Okay, I'm gonna call this village board meeting for September 16th, 2019 to order. Roll call, please.
Joe Zisselberger, Kristen Rungy, Bill Moran.
Here.
Chris Delner.
Here.
Phil Loew.
Here.
Aaron Moran.
Here.
Terry Hertzberg.
Here.
Okay, first thing we have confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices, and online availability.
I confirm that the draft agenda was published in Wanaquie community on September 12th. The final agenda was posted on September 12th at all three of those posting locations. The final agenda and you can download it online on September 12th as well.
Okay, thank you. So first thing we have an announcement, village president announcement regarding his abstentation, abstentation, abstent, abstentation from village matters involving Wanaquie Community Bank and its affiliates. So there's been some talk in the community about this. That's been going on since the announcement was that I was receiving a new position. I did get a lot of congratulations from people, so I'll say thanks first to all those people out there that gave those. Then there's others that have some questions based on what my role is with the bank and how that affects or impacts me being the village president. So I wanted to, first thing that I'd say is, and I've got this written down, so I'm gonna be reading a little bit, but I'll interject some things as we go. And this is for all of our board members as well to be very clear on because we all are gonna be governed by similar things. So when I was considering making a change of employment, I reached out to the village attorney and had an initial discussion on whether a position with the bank would raise any conflict of interest issues with me being an elected position with the village. We talked initially and then had some follow-up discussions. The village attorneys informed me that there may be instances where I, like any elected official in the village or any elected official in other municipalities, will have to abstain from voting on a matter or participating in discussions on a matter because of the direct impact of my employer. For example, from my previous employer and role within the insurance industry at Aflac, Aflac had approached the village about doing business. I was not part of any of those meetings with any of the representatives that came in and recused myself when it came before the board for discussions or any votes. If any of these type situations arise like this, as they could for any municipal official who is employed, I will abstain from voting or participating in the discussion on that matter. We as public officials can and should consult with the village attorney if and when we feel there may be a conflict. The most straightforward example I can give is that I would certainly not play a role publicly or privately on a financial services agreement between my employer and the village if that situation were to arise. I did reach out to one of our financial institutions here in Wanaquie to feel how, see how they felt about it, and he said basically exactly what I just read. That would be the only time where there should be a situation. Also, to address my decision last Monday at the plan commission, out of abundance of caution, I did abstain from certain votes and discussions. At the time of the meeting, the village attorney and I had not completed our discussions. I can tell you now that if the plan commission meeting were held today or next Monday instead of last Monday, I would not be abstaining from those votes or discussions because there would be no reason to do so. That's it. Okay? Okay. Next we have our consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled or I look for a motion?
Would move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion by Phil Loew.
Second.
Second, was that you Gary?
Yep.
Second by Gary Hertzberg. Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone here that would like to make a comment?
I don't have any sheets.
Okay. Todd, anything for you?
I would note that Oktoberfest went really well. A number of people in the room here played a role and put in hours upon hours in making that happen, so I thought it was a wonderful community event. The Muts on Main did auction off and go well. I think we raised about $3,700 or so for the Enders Manufacturing Foundation and then the what, the village's creative economy initiative. So congratulations to everybody who made that event happen.
Excuse me, I actually did put in for a public comment.
I thought it was for a public hearing.
I checked for both boxes.
Oh, I apologize, I didn't see your first question.
Sorry. There's been some, it would be nice if the...
Please state your name.
1703 Alexandria Court, my name's Robert McPherson. I want to address the board, public comment over the fact that there have been some comments from the community, specifically from family members of the village president, that we are overburdening the village when we are asking for open records requests. As far as I'm aware, I pay a rate of about $29 per hour for the clerk's time when I'm making these requests. It would be appreciative to the community to put us at ease if we knew that because we are exercising our right as allowed by the Wisconsin State Legislature to have free and open government, that we are not overburdening the village when we make an open records request. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else over there? Okay. Then I'm gonna share one thing. This August, this past August, and I'll share this with public and Roberto, I'll get you a copy of this as well. There's a list of every state's best suburb, and the best places to raise a family are often found on the edges of large metropolitan areas. We are what we consider a suburb of a city. To find the best suburbs in every state, the survey was conducted using median homeless prices, median monthly rent, annual gross, cost of groceries, healthcare, utilities and transportation, statistics on the consumer expenditure, quality of school districts, violence and property crime rates per thousand people, and I'd just like to announce that Wanaquie was the recipient as in Wisconsin for being the number one suburb in the state. So...
(applause)
So I would just like to congratulate all of our former board members, the community, because it takes the whole community to make that happen. It's not just the board or our committees, but all of us combined. And to get these types of recognition shows that our village is absolutely viewed outside of Wanaquie as a great place for people to be. And if I look at the stack of people in the last two months that have moved in here, they obviously believe that this is a great place to be too. So congratulations to all of you as board members right now, past board members, and to our community for getting this great award. Okay. Public hearing. First thing we have is public hearing and discussion action on proposed amendment to the Wanaquie Code of Ordinance relating to signage.
Introduction, Chris, is the plan commission has recommended approval of the changes to the signage code. And really, the plan commission zoned in on really one particular issue, wanted to make sure that our sign ordinance was compliant with the, with the political signs. I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Then I'm gonna open up the public hearing for anybody who'd like to address the board on this issue.
I don't have any sheets for this public hearing.
Okay, is everybody okay with that's about two minutes? All right. Then we'll close the public hearing. Brian, any comments?
Yeah, I mean, I think Kevin covered it. We started looking at the sign ordinance, and you know, we started, we had a bigger, we were thinking we were gonna make more changes. And I think, we talked as a staff, and I know that Jason Valerius, the village planner at the plan commission, made some statements about the fact that there's this case that I wanna say it was about 2015, United States Supreme Court case, that kinda put every municipality in the country on edge because of the decision. And, and the issue is, nobody's really been able, and there are national organizations and state organizations that have tried to come up with model ordinances to address the United States Supreme Court decision, but nobody's really been able to come up with, with, with the ordinance yet that everyone feels matches it. So we started big when we were looking at the changes to the sign ordinance, and because of that and other reasons, we decided to narrow our, our focus. And, and the focus is also because I think that last time around, maybe in November or October, we heard some, we had some issues with our sign ordinance and some complaints by folks regarding whether or not it was compliant with, compliant with the state statutes. And so essentially, the purpose of this amendment is to close that loop. The changes that we've made here are to ensure that our ordinance is compliant with the state statutes or rules regarding political messages. And, and really, that's, that's the sole purpose for the change. I mean, I can walk through it. If you look at page eighty, page two or one of the ordinance, it's page 85 of your packet, there's a definition of political sign that we are proposing to put into the code. That language is taken directly from the state statute. We've modified our definition of temporary sign only to take out the reference to, a previous reference, reference to political message. We've created a new section to make clear that, you know, signs that contain political messages are gonna be in compliance with the state statutes, and our code should be read to be in compliance with the state statutes. And that's, that's really the purpose for the ordinance.
Okay, board members, any comments, questions for Brian?
I'd make a motion to approve the amendment as proposed.
Motion by Gary Hertzberg?
Second.
Second by Kristen Rungy. My comment is that I think this is a great start, and I think there's a lot of communities that are gonna go even deeper with this, and hopefully we'll continue with that as well, make sure we have a good, clean sign ordinance. So thank you for your work on this. Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Next we have another public hearing and discussion action on general development plan for Arboretum Village subdivision, corner of Quinn Drive and Hogan Road.
In your packet is a copy of the proposed zoning change, which is the GDP for the Arboretum development. And the plan commission recommended approval, but they recommended that staff work with the applicant to finalize a couple of the conditions that the plan commission had regarding the approval. So with that being said, the, what we're recommending is you hold the public hearing, take all the comments, and we'll take all the staff comments that were incorporated as part of the conditions at the plan commission level, and then take any comments that we get tonight as part of the public process, and then bring you back some final documents for your consideration at, at a future board meeting.
Okay. Then I'll open the public hearing for anyone who'd like to address the board on this issue.
The first slip I have is from Ann Lewandowski at 103 West Third Street. She provided some written comments that I'll read. If the setbacks in the lot with an R1 and R3 are barriers to development, perhaps the board ought to continue reviewing the more prescriptive items in the code. Next, we have a con, or a sheet from Robert McPherson of 1703 Alexandria Court, and he wishes to provide some comments.
Yep. I spoke at the plan commission last week. I received quite the response from the developer when I made the comments. I'm gonna repeat it again tonight because I think it bears repeating. This time, I'm actually gonna do a little reading here within my time. The plan unit development district is established to encourage and promote improved environmental design in the village by allowing for greater freedom, imagination, and flexibility in the development of land while ensuring substantial compliance with the basic intent of this chapter, blah, blah, blah. I don't need to go into the rest of what the PUD chapter has. The point is, is that when you look at other PUDs that are in the village, they provide some sort of unique service, something interesting to the homeowners, something interesting to the village, something that helps the village. He has made other PUDs that do meet this. He is incorrect, and when he said plan commission, then I live in a PUD, I do live in R1. I had to go back and check. But he did put some PUDs in there that did allow him to make some use and have three houses stacked together into a little muse there. It's pretty innovative and creative. The new one, there's nothing really innovative or creative in there. It sounds like the developer is just trying to get around the rules, R1 and R3, as the previous comment touched on. I'm not gonna go into that one again. So the point I'm trying to make, speaking in general opposition, if we start giving PUDs to every developer that comes in and wants a PUD, they're not offering any of the communities that's really unique. They just wanna set up an HOA so that somebody can take up, take care of their monument sign, the beginning of their, you know, entrance to their area. I don't think it's really necessary for the public good that you're gonna start bending the rules, giving everybody a PUD, ignoring the R1 and R3 designations. Thank you.
Anyone else?
No, no more comments.
Okay, anyone else like to address the board? Please state your name and stand.
It was Don Tierney.
Address?
3564 Aggrud.
Thank you.
Of course, Wisconsin.
Wow. We, we came to Wanaquie because the city of Madison was gonna take our land and force it into the city of Madison. I didn't want any to do with developers before the 1990 green space hearings. The neighbor Tom Hillibrand came and he said, "Donny, they're gonna take this whole south side of Wanaquie, it's all going to Madison." I became a developer instantly. And what I learned, Bob Richardson was an amazing influence on me. We went to all these older places of Madison, and we realized that if you want something that's rather affordable, and you wanna put a beautiful gazebo in the center, you wanna build a covered bridge, you need to go to plan unit development, because otherwise you just have R1, R2. And they didn't have the PUD thing when I started, the first 51 lots in Southbridge. And Mr. McPherson, I wanna ask you, did you check, is your little cul-de-sac, is that R1?
It is R1 for the plan.
Okay. Then it was right after that one was done, when we did the, the big plaque going up over the top of the hill in Southbridge, when we did the Blue Ridge Edition, 100% PUD. Because when you go up in that park on top of the hill and overlook the lake, we had our park requirement all met. We didn't have to have any more park. And what I did was move, put those three, I call them the crown jewels, in the center of that house Butch Enson built, in the center. If you put a, a laser from the center of the gable through the monument, it will hit the center of the state capitol. It was done on a surveying deal. The little road going behind there, plan unit development, when I went into the Blue Ridge Edition, several hundred lots. When I went to DeForest, 100% PUD. When I went to Deerfield, 100%, I put the Z lots in. And what's so unique about this product is I'm able to, and I listen to some of these same people, maybe they're trying to get elected or something, so I think that'll be bad. I get a kick out of it. So I come in here, and I've got, for example, I wanna have something affordable. So Quinn Drive was something the village wanted to bring through, and I'm doing twin homes where you don't back out. You can actually design them, and you can drive out. And then we've got a huge amount of infiltration for water. The Octavi Brewery is there. We've got an extra place where you have these cool little garden areas where it, it, it sort of blocks it so you're not looking at Octavi Brewery, but you'll have privacy. Because what's happening right now, you have a huge amount of people that are, have four or five bedroom homes in Southbridge, Savannah Village, the Monadown Edition, over 1,200 lots. They need a place where they can sell that home so a young family can move in, and they don't want to spend a huge fortune. They wanna be able to afford it. And these same people that sits in front of me...
Thanks, I gotta, I gotta take the time.
Thank you. 98% PUD.
$150,000 house, Don.
Thanks for the comments. And outside of that, I'm gonna chastise a little bit that this is not a personal thing, this is people giving their opinions during public comment. And people are entitled to what they think, just like we as board members will share here momentarily on what our opinion is. So for future comments like that, aren't okay. Okay, anyone else that wants to make a comment?
I, I just met Don.
Name and, name and address.
106 Franconian Court. I don't know Don, just mail. But talking about our neighborhood and how we appreciate what's there, my wife and I take a walk every night, we head down the street, we walk past the swimming pool, we go down to the paved walkway, we go across the covered bridge, we look at the wildflowers in the arboretum, we make a turn, we go over the brick walkway that leads us past the gazebo, come up to the other walkway, and back home. So I'm not sure what we're talking about, but our neighborhood certainly is not like any other neighborhood that I've been through. Again, I don't know Don, but I just, I'm hearing this, I thought you had, wanna hear that.
Thank you.
Linda Ashmore, 114 South Street. I would just like the board to touch on how this PUD differs from the regular zone, because that seems to be the, the whole point of the discussion here.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then I'm gonna close the public hearing. Brian?
Yes. So just, just a few things to try to respond to, to some of the comments first, and then I'm gonna try to describe for you what's in your packet and kind of the direction that the plan commission gave staff. I know that, that tonight, we're not looking for any action. I think that we wanna make sure that the village board is comfortable with the direction that we got from staff, and then we'll, we'll bring something back to you. If, if the first speaker mentioned this, I, and I didn't hear it, I apologize, I just wanna let you know that the, I, I believe that the, the, the language that he was reading is from the section 133-892 of the village code, which is the purpose for plan unit development district. So I believe that's the language. You're not, we're not looking for any action from you tonight. That being said, if you decide in the future to create a plan unit development district for Arboretum Village and you approve the general development plan, you will not be bending any of your rules. With respect to the last comment, there actually is in your packet, a document that was prepared by the developer and is actually required by our ordinance to explain the, the differences between the PUD and, and our standard zoning, and that is on pages 100 through 103 of your packet. And I'm not gonna go through it unless you want me to, but there is a document in there that does talk about the differences. Now...
Brian?
Yep.
I'd actually like you to do that because somebody asked for that specifically to be stated.
Okay, well, it's, it's pretty long.
Actually, my question is, I read that, and it says what's different, but I'm gonna know why it being different makes it okay.
Okay.
And I guess I would answer that by saying, under state statutes and our village code, we have the flexibility to create plan unit development districts. And I, you know, I, if you want us to look into it further, I, I mean, I think at a staff level, we've looked at all the, I mean, we're still working on the plat, we've looked at the plans. I do think that the, as the, as the developer stated during his, his comments during public comments, I do think there are certain features to this development that are unique. If you want us to try to, if you want us to come up with our own list for your next meeting, I, we can certainly do that. I don't think that we have it right with us right now.
Okay.
The, so you do have a lot of documents within your packet. Starting on, so on pages 95 to 99, you have the general development plan. And so one of the things that the plan commission has asked us to do is, is, is work through the different documents that we've received from the developer. And, and specifically, we have the GDP from pages 95 to 99. Then we have the covenants from pages 107 to 130. And then we have a document that's identified Exhibit A, architectural and design standards, that is pages 131 to 133. Excuse me. We wanna focus on zoning. That, that's what we're interested in. There, as, and Jason, Jason mentions this in his, his memo, which is also part of your packet. There are certain zoning concepts that are within the declarations, that we don't want the complete declarations to, to, to be part of the GDP, because, you know, the village has a history of not wanting to get involved in this, and I can tell you, other municipalities feel the same way. We don't wanna get involved in architectural standard issues for residential homes. We don't wanna get involved in what is a private relationship between a developer and a homeowners association. But what we want the GDP to have is all what we believe are required zoning requirements for the GDP, so that if they're gonna be amended in the future, they have to come back to us to seek to get the amendment. And so one of the things that we need to do is, is we wanna incorporate, and, and Jason started to do this with some language in his memo that he was proposing to add to the GDP. And, and that kind of started the conversation at the plan commission level, and, and we, we drilled down a little bit deeper. And basically, what we need to do is, we need to, we need to correct, incorporate language into the GDP that makes clear that the zoning concepts that are within the declarations and within the Exhibit A are gonna be incorporated into the GDP, but at the same time, make sure that we're not incorporating the architectural standards. And so that's, and the whole purpose there is because the GDP is a zoning document, and we wanna make sure that we have all the zoning covered. That's the first direction that the plan commission gave to us. The second thing that we're gonna do with the GDP is, if you look on page two, which is on 96 of your packet, we are taking out section five. This deals with multifamily residential use. And we're not taking it out because of any position from staff that it shouldn't, this lot shouldn't be used for that purpose, but we've indicated to multiple developers up to this point that we wanna, my understanding is the housing study has been presented to the plan commission and the village board? What's that?
Was, was the housing study presented to the village board too, or just the plan?
Oh, it's coming up. Oh, it's coming, okay. We, we want you all to be able to review that housing study and then to, you know, whatever, what, whatever, if any, policy decisions that you're gonna make as a result of the housing study, if that's gonna require changes to our ordinance, we wanna get through that process before we rezone any land to multifamily. And so that's why we, staff suggested, and, and the plan commission agreed, that we're gonna pull out Lot 61 from, from the GDP. And, and the other issue that we need to work through is, I think it's on, and it's difficult, it, on Hogan Road, there, there are lots that back up to Hogan Road. And I think there's already gonna be a landscaping berm there. And there had been some discussion about some form of fencing. And one of the concerns that staff had regarding the fencing was, if you have a fence that overlaps a number of different property owners, is, there's definitely the possibility that it's not gonna get maintained in the fashion that it should, because it's not just each individual property owner's fence. And so we, we talked about the idea of just doing landscaping, or if there's fencing, we wanna work with the developer on exactly what that fencing would be, maybe just, you know, ideas were thrown out to the plan commission, you could have a fence on one lot, and then landscaping and then a fence, break it up, but that way at least you don't have a fence that goes along all the property lines. And so we need to work through that fencing issue. That will be incorporated in the general development plan, but also would be identified in a development agreement for the, for the land. I think the idea here is, when we do come back with the GDP to you, the final plat is also gonna come at that same time, and the development agreement would come at the same time, so you would be able to take into consideration basically the project as a whole, not just the zoning.
Just a couple of things. One, we're not asking you to take action tonight, and if it's important to the board of really understanding, you know, why, what, what makes a project PUD unique from different types of zoning, we can have our planner put that together. He's reviewed these documents, he supports the PUD, and I could just mention a couple of things that he's mentioned to me. And really, if you wanna look around the village, I think you can see the difference. If you look at the Savannah Village, the Southbridge, and some of the ones that had come around, they're, they're really unique and different from the traditional R1 zoning. If you compare it to Westview Meadows, where it's, it's more, every lot's almost the identical size, almost all the, the homes are, are pretty identical in size in terms of the massing. Same with the, and if you go up the hill on one, on Lexington Drive, similar type housing, next door, next door, a, a very similar cadence going along, which is okay. I mean, if that's the type of subdivision you wanna live in, that's what you get. You're, you're really held to those traditional zoning standards. What, what this development does in some of these other PUD, it creates different levels of development, so that you can have a large lot next to a smaller lot. So you get that varying uniqueness in terms of what that subdivision looks like. It doesn't look cookie cutter. It's got a place for a home that's only probably is, you know, approaching the higher ends of, of some of our housing, you know, six, 700,000, next to a house that maybe is closer to $400,000. You can have that varying difference in the subdivision by allowing these PUD type of, of zoning. One thing Don has, has done, or his developments have done, is create a, a front yard space. And, and he's done that through some changes from the R1 zoning. So you're not, really, as you drive down these streets, they're more approachable, it's just not the simple garage door and, and a, a front door. It's got a front porch, and that's one of the examples that you can go to and say, it's created this front porch in our front yard setback, which probably complements what, what occurred in some of the older housing in our, in our central downtown. It creates a, a space that people wanna be in, in the front yards, as opposed to all the activities going on in the backyard. But I'm only touching on a couple of them. If, if you're interested, I could ask our, our planner to put together a number of, of different differences and why he would support PUD. I'm just trying to get you to think about it before he comes back with a report, driving around some of these different subdivisions, and really think about what makes this unique compared to some of the other standard R1 zoning within, or R2 zoning within our subdivision, or within our code.
Questions? Comments?
Well, I kinda like the idea of a subdivision mixed up where you got a level of houses that range from, let's just use a magic figure, say 200, 300, 400, 500, where they're not all the one thing. I think that mixing them in gives a chance for a little bit of value for both ends. I like the idea of the fence. I would think about a staggered fence maybe that would have the cut-throughs where it wouldn't be all in one place. I think that's, that's kind of a good idea. I know in some areas of town, the fence wouldn't be kept up except for one person that lives in the subdivision that personally takes care of it. And, you know, when that person moves on, I don't know what happens. But I also wanna support the fact that in all these developments that we've done lately, the streets are built to a better standard than we've had many, many years ago. There's better base, et cetera. There's more trees started ahead of the housing, so that when the people move in, they have a street tree, or et cetera, that they, they can look forward to improving with time. The control of the yardhouses and screening the future residents from the businesses that are in the business park is very creative. So I, I think there's a lot of good steps that are in this, and I, I think one of the So I, I think there's a lot of good steps that are in this, and I, I think one of the ways we can accomplish that is with the PUD development.
Gary?
I can talk about the fences. I have a.
He's the guy that's talking about.
There's about eleven homeowners on it, and I, and I, sometimes, it's, it's in the HOA documents, it's in the covenants. But people move in and out of these homes, and they say, I never knew we were responsible for the fence. And we, you know, we all got together and we had long discussions, and we figured out, you know what, we'll just do this ourselves. And we stained it and maintained it. But someday, when the boards rot and it has to be replaced, you may have one homeowner. So I, I don't know where the best place to put that. If it's in, trying to have the HOA over that, or somehow if the village could be over it, I don't know, but it, it is kind of a touchy subject, because people come in and say, wait, I didn't know that was in my covenants. I never read it. It's not my responsibility. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna rebuild my ninety feet of fence. I don't wanna spend that money. So I don't know what document it needs to be in, but if you build a fence, you need to be able to maintain it for, you know, fifty years, or whatever it is.
I have a solution for that. I used to be the secretary of a homeowners association in Nina, who the sole purpose was to maintain a mile of commonly owned fence that bordered my yard. And we had, the fence was gapped by common landscaping that the subdivision paid to put in. And we paid sixty-five dollars a year, this was in two thousand and eight, I'm sure the price has gone up since then, to the homeowners association for insurance and maintenance of the fence. So when it blew over, and Nina blew over routinely, the insurance company paid for it to be replaced. And when my boards rotted, I called my neighbor, who was the president, and he was in charge of it. I wasn't, and said, I need you to come over and replace some boards. So it was commonly paid for and maintained, so no individual homeowner had that burden. But our homeowners association was active from the minute the first house was put in, rather than when fifty-one percent of ownership shifted to homeowners. Which is a key diff, I live in Savannah Village now, and I know we often call Don when things are, our bulbs are burned out, or landscaping, or whatnot. You are kind enough to come and replace it. But that, you know, initial burden put on the homeowners through the association and an active elected board was a key in our neighborhood, at least, to maintaining that. So that's one solution. We may, I may be ahead of myself in that.
Well, any comments? Aaron?
I don't know.
So, my only comments with regards to this, and I'll refer back to what I read earlier, that we're one of the best suburbs in, in the state. We just were rated the best suburb. And we've got, I, I have five siblings, with my father included in that, that live in Wannakee. None of them live in a Don Tierney subdivision. Okay? No offense to Don, but not a single one of us live there. And we use all the amenities that are in there, so I think with the flexibility of the PUD, it gives us, as a whole community, great flexibility with what we're doing out there in the community. And whether it's the covered bridge, to the trails, to the nature, whatever, whatever that may be, that's a great thing and great asset for our community. My subdivision is a great subdivision. We don't have any of those things. Okay? We have basic rows of houses. You know, and I, I'm fortunate to live on the park, so I do, we do have a park, but that's a common thing. So, right now, that's kind of where I stand as far as where we are with this PUD. I do think there's gonna be some additional asset within this subdivision that, that Don always puts in. And that, and that's the last thing I'll say, is look at track records of developers. When people comment that we're gonna have all kinds of developers coming in, they don't necessarily have a track record with us at this point. Don has a long track record, that he does these things. When he says he's gonna do them, he does them. And that's, that's a, something that we, as a board, have to take into account as we're going through this. So, Gary?
One, one other comment is just on a number of old lots in this plat that, I mean, we have ordinances, and we have wetlands that are in subdivisions for water retention area. And I know, and this is probably a public works issue that we need to deal with, but in the community here, we have a lot of issues with people who wanna make their water retention area a park for themselves, or they complain that their neighbor is mowing it, and they shouldn't mow it, it should be wetlands. And so, it gets to be a big burden on our public work staff, because whatever they do is wrong. So I think we need to look at that from a public work standpoint. So when we have water retention, homeowners, when they move in there, know it's gonna be water retention. They don't get to go in and, you know, make a park, or make gardens, or do what they wanna do, or put trampolines in it. You know, I just think, when you get a, you got a water retention area, that's what it needs to be.
Okay, so, are we, what else?
Well, I, I think, I haven't heard anybody question the feedback that we received from the plan commission. So unless someone tells us differently here, I think we're gonna, it sounds like we're hearing the same thing from the village board, is what the plan commission told us. And so we will update the documents accordingly, when, when they come back to you, and be able to explain the, you know, the, the ways that we've incorporated all of the zoning into the GDP.
Is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Gary, good?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, next we have license and permits, discuss and take action on operator license applications for Aaron Maurer, Hamed Odunwu, Danielle Lee, Andrea Coder, Kristen Wisely, Jocelyn Rip, Patricia Dorzak, Jay Bassey, Olivia Fisher, Andrew Wright, Whitney Horken, Macy Malbach, Cindy Wellington, and Alyssa Erwin. And I'm guessing this might have something to do with a restaurant that's opening.
Correct. As you can see, Boston's Pizza is gearing up to open, hence all of our operator license requests. Thank you for reading all those names. They are all recommended for approval, subject to completion of a Responsible Developer Training Course and review by the Wannakee Police Department.
Okay, do we have a motion? Motion by Bill Random. Second?
Second.
Second by Aaron Moran. Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Post? Ayes have it. New business, discuss and take action on proposed amendment to the Wannakee Code of Ordinances relating to the regulation and licensing of short-term renewals, including requiring the payment of room tax. Brian?
I thought this was Caitlin. No, just kidding. First, I wanna credit Caitlin, because I think she did an excellent job in the memo of summarizing what we're doing here. The other thing I wanna do on the front end is give a lot of credit to Tom Wilson. I think, as everybody knows, Westport has been wrestling with this issue, the same short-term rental license issue, the same way that Wannakee has. It maybe has even been more of an issue in Westport. And, and Tom did one heck of a job putting together an ordinance that the town board has already adopted. And when you look at pages one fifty-two through one sixty-four of your packet, I mean, it is not identical. We've made certain administrative changes. The example I would give is I, I believe their license year is gonna go from July first to June thirtieth, and our license year is gonna go from January first to December thirty-first. But in, in all substance, we have, we have the same ordinance that Westport has. And I, I, I think both the town board and the village board directed their staffs to put together an ordinance that, and, and I think that Caitlin captured this in her issue summary, pro, accomplishes the village board's wishes to create a system of regulation for short-term rentals that is allowable under the state statutes, but as restrictive as possible. And I have looked at a number of these short-term rental ordinances in the state. I have helped other communities adopt them. I have not seen an ordinance that is more restrictive than the one that Westport adopted and the one that's before you. To be honest, I haven't seen one that's close to it. So I think that this document captures the, the concept of, of what you wanted, or at least what you directed staff to do. I, I think it's, I'm not sure how you want, what you want me to do from this point. I mean, I can go through and kind of describe it in a little bit more detail, or answer questions, or however, however you wanna move forward.
Why don't we ask questions and see, see what the folks here wanna?
Okay.
If they have questions. Gary?
How do we manage the room tax portion of that?
So, okay, so let me, let me, so there's actually, there's actually, there's, there's kind of three relevant documents in your packet. So you have, starting on page one, one fifty-two, going to page one sixty-four, that's the actual language that is gonna go into our ordinance. So if you go on municode.com, that's what's gonna be there. So then we have, on pages one sixty-five and one sixty-six, we have kind of what I, maybe the best way to cover ordinance. So that basically incorporates by reference the much longer document that's gonna be going into our code. And, and so, if you're gonna approve that document, if you wanna approve the, 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 the major changes, you, you approve the ordinance that's on pages one sixty-five and one sixty-six of your packet. Then, on pages one sixty-seven and one sixty-eight, you have the change to our code that's gonna require short-term rentals to pay the room tax. And it's gonna be paid in the same way that the hotel in town pays it. And one of the requirements to have the short-term rental license is that you obtain, we actually have, and as part of our code, you have to get a room tax permit. And so that's one of the things that the short-term rental license would need to get. But from an administrative standpoint, it's gonna be administered in the same way that we do with, with our hotel. I guess, now that you mentioned it though, I, I would like to jump back to, one of the questions that you had for us at the last meeting when we talked about this is, how are we gonna implement the, the new changes? And I guess the way that it's proposed here is, because we have a license year that's gonna go from January first to December thirty-first, a- after someone has actually obtained a license, then there's a renewal process. And we have language in the code that says, or the proposed code, that says, you need to file your application for a renewal by October fifteenth, to allow us to process it and have it be acted upon by the village board before January first. In that way, it's similar to the process that we use for alcohol licensing, just different date. What we're proposing here is basically, we adopt, and the recommendation for the village board is that you adopt the code. But we wanna use essentially the timeframe for the renewal process, the first time around, for the initial application. In other words, we want, if somebody wants to operate a short-term license, and they are, short-term rental, and they wanna do it starting January first, they need to get us their application by October fifteenth, so that we can process it before January first. The impact of that is essentially, we're not gonna be, we're gonna use our other ordinances to regulate the use of short-term rentals between now and the end of the year. Because it's, you know, we're already less than a month away from October fifteenth. And so we just felt like this may be the appropriate, most appropriate process. And I'll be honest, I saw some emails that indicated that there was a problem this weekend with a short-term rental. And I think that what happened at that residence can be taken into consideration if that residence also files an application. I would say that, and I would say that if that, if, if somebody has a license and that activity occurs, and I don't wanna get into too much detail, because I don't know how, what the police have done to this point, and if any citations have been issued, or things of that nature. I'm just looking at public documents that are, that are emails. I mean, that type of activity would not be allowed by a short-term rental. That would form a basis to revoke a license if it were issued. But I, we wanna make sure that you're comfortable with that process, because there may be some places that have someone booked, you know? Some, at some point in time in October or November, and the question becomes, is it, is it reasonable, is it fair to say you can't operate until you, you get the license, because this is a process. So before somebody, before somebody gets a license, they're gonna have to file a lot of paperwork with Caitlin. Other staff members are gonna review it, and then we're gonna have a public hearing before the village board. And so it's not something that's gonna happen immediately. And so that's, that's one question for you, is are you okay with that initial process to get the initial application?
This is January first that this is gonna kick in, correct? Based on what you're stating?
The, the ordinance.
Is there anything we can do that's faster than that?
I'm sorry?
Is there anything we can do that's faster than January first?
We, we could maybe shoot for December first? I mean, if, if you talk, I mean, it's already September, what, sixteenth? You know, getting an application in could take, it could, we don't even have the application drafted yet. I mean, there's administrative stuff that we have to do on our end. This is one reason why I think it's gonna be helpful, that we're, our ordinance, if you adopt it, would be similar to Westport's, because I know they've already started that process. I think there's already been some discussions at a staff level on putting it, you know, preparing the application document itself. You know, so theory, I think December, you know, December first could, could work to try to get it done. I don't know, I'm kinda.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Would you then require them to become reissued January one, so you'd issue a license for one month, and then January one would be another license?
So, I'm just gonna describe the situ, the situation, and the public should know this. And, Brian, make sure you keep me in line with if anything I shouldn't be saying, okay?
Well, I would say, first of all, everything that we've heard right now is allegations. So.
So, right now, we don't have anything governing us here. And let's just assume that a house that's on a cul-de-sac with the road about the width of this room, with the houses right around it, has a party. And that party is twenty-year-olds. That's birthday party. Just rented it, okay? Brought forty kids, okay, to have a party in that home. They may or may not be doing good things in that home, we'll just say. And they're up, and we have to have six hours' worth of police time that the taxpayers get to pay for. I'm in favor of making sure we don't have that situation in Wannakee. And whatever we can do to tighten this, to make sure that, that they have to meet certain criterias that are very stringent. If you, if you're telling me this is the most stringent that you've found in the state, I have to be supportive of that. But I'm, I'm also saying, yeah, we need to, I'm okay with being on the, on the front of this, to make sure that we're, we're strong.
Well, I, I do believe that we're on the front of it. I, I think, I guess, there's, the, there's how quick, I mean, it, once you, if you adopt this ordinance, because there are penalty provisions in it, it becomes effective once we publish it. So we will probably publish it a week from Thursday, 'cause I don't think that we can get it in to this edition's Wannakee Tribune. So it becomes effective right away. What we've tried to do is build in a period to administer the process on the front end. And since we were so late in the year, we thought, well, we'll use the dates effectively that you use for getting a renewal. Now, we can, we can speed that up. I, I think, I think Caitlin's question was basically, if, if all of a sudden you issue, let's say we do speed up the process. So someone does apply for a license, and they do get a license, let's say, by December first, or maybe mid-November. I think our recommendation would be, for that, for those people, if they're getting it this late in the year, and the first time around, that the license should effectively go through all of twenty-twenty then too, as opposed to making somebody come back right away after they've just gotten their license and get a renewal. But if you want us to, if, if you wanna change this, so that effectively the, the ordinance goes into effect right away, I get, well, I guess one question is this. Do you believe there should be a buffer? There may be places that have something scheduled for this weekend. I mean, it is Michigan.
Chris, I think one thing that, that I see is, as long as we have the ability, you know, when they come in for their license, and I don't know if that's November or December, we can look back at their track record and what they've done, you know, so far. I mean, that'll help us judge, because, yeah, you may have to live with it for three months. But if they're not following what we want, we can take that into consideration if we give them a license or not going into next year. So, I, I don't want the administrative piece just jammed through and make it difficult. 'Cause I think we still have a pretty good leverage as a board, because we're gonna be the people that either approve or deny these requests.
If we put this in today, or whatever, with the penalties, is the penalty phase set up like this happens now? Or do they have to get their license to be eligible for the?
So what would happen, well, I mean, first of all, there, we do, I mean, I, I know how significant this is. So I don't, I mean, what I'm gonna say here doesn't want to take away from this. We also have other ordinances on the books right now, that if the allegations in the, the email that I've seen are accurate, there are other citations that can be, you know, there's other penalties that would be applied to the property, not just related to this.
And they're applied to the property, not to the people?
Well, I, I guess I, I mean, certainly to the people, I, I might wanna have a discussion with the chief, but it seems to me that if the activities that have been alleged were ongoing at the house, the property owner is also, has some issue, has some potential penalties that can be levied against them. It's, it's, it's really up to you. I mean, I, I do agree with what Gary said. If, when you are considering whether or not to grant a license, anything that's happened that you've know of to date, and anything that would happen potentially between now and the end of the year, can be taken into consideration by the village board when it decides to grant a license. I, I can tell you that, you know, for example, again, allegations, but the allegations that I saw in, in, in the record, those would, those allegations, if true, would be sufficient to revoke a license. And if something is sufficient to revoke a license, then I also believe it would be sufficient to not grant a license in the first place. And so, we can move faster if that's all, if, if you would like that. But I also agree with Gary, that anything that happens between now and the end of the year can be taken into consideration when you're reviewing the application.
My only other comment is, and I would encourage any residents that have questions about this, or comments or concerns, to reach out to your state legislature. about this, or comments or concerns, to reach out to your state legislatures. They're the ones that put this in place to allow for it, and if you're, if you're not in favor of it, that's who you really need to reach out to. We're kind of taking it after the fact and trying to operate within their guidelines of what they've placed, correct?
Correct. I mean, there is a state law that says municipalities cannot completely prohibit these. And there are certainly, there are municipalities that don't have a problem with these, there are municipalities that would love to be able to prohibit them entirely. The state law doesn't allow municipalities to do that, and so that, if that's something that you favor, the state law can always be changed, and to give more local control. And so I, that's, yes, I think that those comments can be made to your legislator.
I had a couple of questions. So I've, too, been reading these, our office is putting together a list of ordinances from around the country. And on number eight, on page 155 of our packet, it says that it refers to outdoor events must occur between, I think it's either 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM. So are outdoor events then implicitly allowed, or do they need an event permit? And then my second question is, what about an indoor event? And is there any way we could, if it's the will of the plan commission and the board, have the use of rental property be restricted to those who are registered guests only?
Okay, so whether or not they need a permit for the outdoor events, I'm, I would say this, the fact that there is a reference here to outdoor event doesn't mean they, there's also language in here that says they have to comply with all applicable local and state and federal regulations, federal obviously not going to apply, but if we have a code provision that requires a permit for an outdoor event, if it hits a certain threshold, that would still apply. This doesn't take that off. I know you didn't ask that question, but I'll just let you know that the reason for the hours there are that those are the same hours that are in our current noise ordinance. What was the other-
The second one is, is can we restrict the, so with any sort of event, is it possible to restrict the use of the house only to registered guests, so that somebody renting a house and then inviting 20 of their best friends over? Would, I don't know if that's-
I would say that, you, I haven't seen it. I think if, if you want to put it in there, I think we can add it. I can't tell you that if it gets challenged, it's going to be upheld, but if that's something that's important, then we can, you know, I heard one comment that says, you know, the village doesn't mind being on the forefront of this. If that's kind of the position of the rest of the village board, then, you know, there is other language within this document that places certain restrictions on the number of people that can be there, but I don't think that it places restrictions on that. I mean, the other question becomes, well, I mean, what if you have somebody who's renting it and they're having a wedding, and it's like the most peaceful thing-
Yeah.
-possible? Are you, you know, I would just, playing devil's advocate, throw it out there. And the last thing that I would say is, if you have an outdoor event that gets outside of, out of control, that's going to be something that could be taken into consideration when either if you want to contemplate revoking a license or not reissuing a license. So you, I think you could add that language if you want to, but you might also have some other mechanisms to protect against what you're really concerned about.
Chris, I love that idea. Brian, I mean, I'm looking at it from a pure insurance standpoint. If I'm renting that place, and there's a fire, how many people are in there? How do we know who's in there? When our fire department gets there? We need to make sure that-
You're looking at me.
Does that come into play somewhere?
Well, Caitlin's looking at me, and I'm looking at you guys, so you go ahead.
No, I don't have any-
Oh, okay.
You're talking about capacities in the house, you're talking about all the different things. I'm sure there's got to be rules.
There is capacity for in, in the house, but an outdoor event, then you start getting at, you know, people are outside, and so some of that language would not apply. But again, if you want to add-
So naming guests? If we name guests, we kind of limit how many people are going to be able to be there-
Yeah.
-based on capacity of the home.
Did I hear correctly, if we say only people who are residing there-
Registered.
Registered to be there can be at the event, then yes, you are definitely limiting the number of people that can be there.
How does everybody feel about that? Bill?
I just want to, I just worried about tantrum behavior in the meantime. I'd like to get this thing in, you know? That's my, whatever it takes to get it in, I mean, the original setup, so it's just fat, I, December, January seems far to me, and I, and December doesn't seem that close either. I know we have to have this board process, but it's, I would just like it done, I mean, and I don't know how we speed that up. I'm more interested in getting this ordinance in, so that there's actually some real leverage. I'm afraid that the people who are doing it now, are in it now, are just going to say, "Yeah, we did it, we're done, and that was our, we sort of did bad behavior at the end. Didn't we show you something?"
But then they would be gone after December 31st.
Right, but they're still between now and then. I mean, that is-
If, again, if you, if you want us, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of spitballing here, but so it's September 16th, three weeks-
Next week.
Yeah, it's published next week, but we can, we can start the process administratively, working on the application right now. I mean, even if you require the application in by October 15th, we could still have it on the agenda, shoot for agendas for November. I mean, I guess, we can't promise that we would have all of them processed, because some of these is going to take a little bit longer time for staff to review than others, but we can, we can definitely try to push this up so that licenses are issued by December 1st.
Does anybody, do we know what the estimate of the number is? I mean, I have-
I don't know.
We are aware of the people who spoke at the public hearing who operate them in the village. The plan was to reach out to those individuals and send them a letter of, we know, we are aware, you came to a public hearing and stated you were operating a short-term rental, you were not allowed to use the ordinances.
Is earlier, if it's two, is earlier going to harm? I know you're the office, is going to-
I just want to make sure that we have everything in line for these people, so it's not, you know, I just want to make sure that for the first time around, that we as staff are comfortable with the process we're going to do, and that we're not creating unrealistic timelines, but I think if we shoot for December 1st, that should be fine. You can keep the application deadline as a, we already drafted the application, but it's going to be reviewed. So I would think I told the team to refine the deadline, and I would shoot for October or the November meetings. They do require a public hearing, so we're going to comply with that. But again, we don't know the number of these, but we are aware of two.
The only thing I would add to that is, if you do have some, an entity that's thought processes, once this ordinance gets adopted, we aren't going to operate a short-term rental, and so we're just going to operate it to, till, you know, the end of the year, as long as they do it less than 10 times, we, we don't cover them. And that's, we don't have the authority to do that. So that's in the state statute of, if you do it less than 10 times in a year, you don't have to get, you don't have to comply with our code provision. Or stated differently, we don't have the ability to impose our code provision on you. So I just, that, that doesn't mean we can't do what Caitlin is saying right now, but that may not cover the concern that you have, Dr. Random, of the person who's like, you know what, once this thing, once, once, once I have to comply with this, I'm, I'm not going to comply with this, because I'm not going to put myself in a position to have to get the license from Wanake. There are outs for them based on the state statutes. Now, that being said, we have other code provisions that would apply if, if, if something is getting too rowdy.
So does our, and I apologize, is our code, is it attached to the property or the people? Right now, it's attached?
Well, you can't operate, if, if you are going to operate a rent, a short-term rental-
Or the renters, or is it the-
Our code, our code provision right now applies to the property owners and the person who would operate it. It doesn't apply to the people who would rent it, although depend, if they engage in activity that's inappropriate, we would have other ordinances that would apply to them in addition to this.
He's talking about what, right now?
Oh, right now.
Right now. Right now, how would it be?
Right now, we don't, right now, I would say that we have ordinances that would in place, that would, you know, in, address certain activity by individuals. If you have a noise complaint, for example, related to a property, that would go back to the property owner, not to the individuals, I believe.
So that would go to the owner?
Yes. Yeah, it depends on the conduct. But there, we definitely have, noise, for example, is one that would go back to the property owner, because the, the activity is, the violation is occurring on their land.
Okay.
The days that we have in there, I think it's stated as six days, right? Correct? Could we extend that to 10 days?
No. So that, we actually had a lot of discussion on that, Tom and Kevin and I, and Tom drafted this ordinance based on things he's read, and then he showed me some of the legal opinions. And effectively, the way that he drafted it, and the way that we've, the way that Westport's done it, the way that we've done it, based on these legal opinions, this is the strictest that we can be with respect to the days.
Okay. I guess I'm just, one other question, and this is probably a, you know, chief blend all, but, so let's say there's underage drinking. You know, usually a parent is maybe responsible, I can see an underage person getting a ticket for underage drinking, but if there's a party there, is the renter also liable? I don't think the homeowner would be, but I mean, is a renter who's-
I, I don't know. I mean, my, my initial answer would be, I think that we would try to go after everybody. You know, the individuals who've engaged in the misconduct by, you, the example you gave was underage drinking, the renter and the property owner, in this case, who's allowed it to be rented for that purpose.
I'd like the chief's opinion on that, so at least when these people are coming in for licenses, they understand, you know, and maybe they wouldn't be liable, and that's fine, but I'd rather be able to state-
Well, they may not be liable, let's say, for selling, but if they have a license, then that activity would have occurred when they rented it, and so that, that activity would negatively, could, if you, if, depending on what happens, could negatively impact their ability to retain, maintain and retain the license.
Okay. All right, so the motion as presented, does that cover what we needed to?
Well, so I, I heard, I heard two, two main comments. One was going back to page, I think it was page 155, outdoor events. Do you, do you all want to see language stating that only people who are registered at the home can attend the event? That, and then you don't have to answer that yet, but that was one issue that I saw raised. And the other issue doesn't go to the language of the, of the longer document itself, but it goes to pages 165 and 166 of the ordinance that adopts this by reference, and we kind of lay, set forth the process, and within this document, it sets forth the process of, the goal is, get you, you have to get your application to us by October 15th, we will process it, and then we will issue it, you know, effective January 1st, but we're not going to be looking to issue and process licenses before then necessarily. And I also heard comments saying, hey, can we speed up that process? And so depending on where the board is at on those two different issues, it either requires changes to both documents, or to neither documents, or to one or the other.
I'm in favor of adding, I do know, Chris, to your point again, I have rented in Florida in places that, that's what the subdivision's designed for, for tourists, and we had to list every person that was going to be there with their birth date.
Well, we-
As part of this. That's kind of going back to the maximum amount, so depending on what size house it was that you're renting, you could have this amount of people, you couldn't go over that. That's how many you are allowed to have.
I guess we have that as part of the ordinance, I think Brian could-
Yeah, I'm trying to find it right now.
But I think, to add your point, Chris, or Kristen asked the question, and I've looked at a number of the different ones, it doesn't, typically they'll have house rules that go along with these Airbnbs, and I just looked up one in Madison, and this is pretty typical, and it says, "No visitors outside of confirmed guests." So it's a common house rule, so I'd, you know, I'd probably ask Brian and the teams that we then ought to be able to also add that as a, as a restriction.
So we do, so on the first point, on the top of page 156, we say, "Each short-term rental shall provide a register and require all guests to register their true names and addresses before being, before being occupancy," well, looks like there might be a typo there. It sounds to me like then, at least what's been suggested, is every person needs to register, and then it's only those people who've registered that, that can attend the outdoor event.
Yeah, because that, I mean, for the people that are next to these, you know, all of a sudden, 10 more cars pull up into a street, and, you know, they have no place that, if anybody wanted to come to their house, that, you know, they park two blocks away. I, to Chris's point, I'd also like to add age to that, you know, says name, address.
Oh, to, oh, and age?
Yeah.
Are we getting this list before or after? On 16 and 156, it says we have the register of guests for a year, like it's available for inspection, but are we getting it every time there's a rental, or just they have to have it so we can look?
I think they just have to have it so that we can inspect it, inspect it. So-
That we need like an update, do we want?
Well, I mean, we'd have the ability to request it anytime we want. I guess would be the way that I would say it, if that's, if that's satisfactory.
Is that the outdoor guests?
Well, so, I would just, just kind of write, I mean, only reg, only regis, and I'll work on this, but only registrants in sub-paragraph 16 can attend an indoor or outdoor event at the property. That seems to be what you want added then to that sub-8 that deals with the events.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Okay. And then, I guess, do we, in page 16, or I'm sorry, on page 156 and sub-paragraph 16, we have certain information that needs to be identified for the registrants. Do you want age added to that?
Birthday?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's birthday.
Okay. Okay, I'm looking at a birth. And so that deals, that's two amendments to the document that's before you right now. Then, I haven't heard any amendments to the, to the longer code language. The question becomes then, so right now, we have, we have kind of a timeframe identified on pages 165 to 166 of trying to get these processed. I've heard statements to the effect of, we would like to move more quickly on that. And so, and, and I've also heard, or I think I saw nods, that if we do that, if we basically say, you know, the deadline is, you, you, in order to operate one of these, you have to receive your license by December 1st. I mean, I think if we put something before December 1st, it's going to be administratively hard. But I think we could amend this to say December 1st, but I also saw nodding that said, look, if you come in and you get this license prior December 1st, that's going to allow you, that license is, is going to go basically for a year plus one month.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we have time with the notices of public hearing and such, to have December 1st?
I, I think it's, I think we can probably do December 1st. I think anything before then is going, and you always have the ability to, if, if we get into this, and all of a sudden December 1st became too aggressive, that we can, we can have that discussion again. I, I think stating it as December 1st, I, you know, we'll, we'll do, we'll do whatever we can to make sure that we hit that date. So then, if that's, so if you look at page 165, there's a sub, there's a paragraph 3 that says, "Any owner wishing to operate a short-term rental in the village of Wanake effective January 1st, 2020," that would be changed to December 1st, 2019. Shall complete and file an application with the village on or before October 15th. And then in the next paragraph, it says, "We're going to delay enforcement until December 1st, 2019," although that's, doesn't create a blank check for activity at a, at a, at a property, because as been, as been discussed, if certain things are occurring right now, that can be taken into consideration for purposes of whether or not you're going to grant the license in the first place.
Chris, the part, the part that grinds me is, the poor neighbors who have to live next to this, even the state statute says, well, if you do it 10 times or less a year, you don't have to apply to anything we do. And so they pick their 10 days out of the year, and the poor neighbors have to put up with it every year, and we have no ordinance that really controls that or deals with it.
Nor can we.
No, it's right, I mean, I have it right in front of me here. I mean, it says, "Any person who maintains, manages, or operates a short-term rental for more than 10 nights each year, and then shall do all of the following," and it says that you, if we have an ordinance in place, you have to comply with it, but not-
But the noise and the-
But that's a separate, we other, I mean, if somebody does this, so let's say someone's going to say, "Eight nights of the year, I'm going to, I'm going to operate this." If they, I mean, we other, have other ordinances that are in place that was going to regulate that conduct, even if they don't have to get a short, short-term rental license.
And again, if you don't like this, please write to your legislatures at the state level and see if they would reconsider what they've done.
The last thing I would note is, there's one additional update to December 1st, 2019, on page, the top of page 166. So those are, those are the, those are the three things that, that I've heard, is the outdoor, outdoor slash indoor events, adding date of birth to the registrants, and then trying to get this thing going, or changing this so that it's December 1st, 2019, as opposed to January 1st, 2020, with the understanding that if you do get that license this year, it's going to op, it's going to, it's going to be valid through December 31st of 20- it's gonna op, it's gonna, it's gonna be valid through December thirty-first of 2020.
I have two more questions. Is it possible, will it be possible for these applicants to have the other things we're requiring, the rooming from the state of Wisconsin, Department of Revenue? That won't take longer than?
I don't know what those processes are. I mean, that would be an example of, if somebody's making a good faith effort and for some reason they're not able to get it, then that, if that comes up and we have that information, we'll share it with you.
Okay. And then my second thing is, I know we had talked, when we had our public hearing on this, of the potential of regulating it different, if it's a whole house versus one-room listing, and some of them are listed as both, are we dropping that?
Well, I, I think we did talk about that. I think this is gonna be a bit of an administrative bear to start this process out. My thought would be, let's let, let's do this now and see how it works. And if it turns out that, once we kind of get our feet under ourselves, if we have the ability to maybe make some of those adjustments, I mean, it's broad enough right now that they can do that. They're just, I mean, somebody can just rent out one room as opposed to the whole house. I mean, there's nothing within this document that prevents it. We just haven't set up separate rules.
They just need to obtain the same license of someone who wants to rent there. On our application or their form, they would tell us what room is being-
Okay, so our recommended motion would be plus the three changes that you recommended.
If, yeah, if that's what you're gonna do, those, those three changes will be incorporated.
So do we have that motion from someone?
We certainly do. I'm making the motion, we approve the ordinance creating chapter eighteen, article seven of the Village of Wanakee Code of Ordinances concerning the regulation on licensing of short-term rentals, and approve the ordinance of making chapter sixty-two, article three of the Village of Wanakee Code of Ordinances concerning the hotel motel tax with the three amendments adjusted as that we have talked about that are in the hands of our attorney.
Okay, motion by Phil, and second by Bill Random. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, nice have it.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion adjourned, Gary Hertzberg, second, Bill Random. Call the question, all in favor, say aye. Aye, posed, thank you, everybody.